It may be flexible to do that lightweight. Okay, I don't know.
They're trying to do right. I just want to make sure that what they put up. But this is one of the. Mass on the.
Yeah. But he asked.
Well, I got.
I was amazed. There's no cushions.
Any other building?
If you don't think. Let's take these chairs down. Make that couch.
So I.
We're ready. Going with planning board meeting. Those of you new to our audience. We had the special on the table back there. We've got a printout of basically our procedures. Perhaps some subdivision, so on and so on. So if you're interested in what we're doing. A good explanation for it. Welcome to take a seat. If you wish. Tonight, we have. Eight pieces of old business, one piece of new business, pre-publicary. Because of the. Length of the ZBA publicating on material road length. We decided to invert the schedule. Do a regular order of business. For fairness to the very. In the holding public. So explain about public hearing. Procedure when we get to. First thing is the mention of the meeting of August. Anybody?
Make the most embarrassing.
Motion to accept it. If I have a second. All favor. Against, the eyes haven't convinced the accepted. All right, first order of all business. Second road solar project. You're on. The recording, by the way, is taking place for the owl in front of me. Make sure you close it. Yeah, we even said the podium.
Hi, I'm Melissa Malco at Delaware River Solar. We are here requesting an extension because there's an issue with the night segment agreement. Or sorry, the night segment equipment. Okay, we're here today. The extension because there's an issue with the nice egg equipment. Right now, if we were to connect to the grid, the capacity would be overloaded. So the redevelopment team at Delaware River Solar has been working with nice egg. But it is a slow process to get any of this.
Okay, I've heard about that. The. Old solar project seem to be held up by night saying how they. It's not unusual case. So the first one, the gentleman. Is a six month extension on the second road solar project. They have very good issues. Local electric company is simply not capable of handing their output. Do I have any comments or questions? Somebody care to make a motion for a six month extension? I have a vote going second. Second, all favor. He gets. He's the owner.
Yeah. Good luck.
Someone will counter to her, I suppose. Is a project called sushi boat. Which those of you who have been about Shelby might notice is a very busy. Unusual combination of activity. Both need sushi at the same time. All right, can I explain what you wanted to do with what you got? We have. We inverted the public hearing, so basically we're doing your business.
Well, I mean, the vote was in the board of last meeting. Last meeting, so what we're doing is basically adding a grid story to the existing building. And we're adding a utility or storage building, twelve foot by forty four storage building. At the end of the property that basically shows what we're doing. So I think I just provided. Elevation use of the proposed building. And of course, it's going to do a full plan for a practical plan that will be in. Review question. Okay, anyone?
It's gonna be a very tall version of what you have right now. It's gonna be the same building we have.
Yeah, just one story. Noticeful dining area. So much so, bouncing second floor. Okay, you're fine. You done that with no time? Any owners right here? You're back six months. Try to get a. I mean, you could have. You could have jumped for a pool before a dining. He's not. He's not trying to have any dining. Or or the tip or. You have those comfortable reports of the engineer, designers, because he will. He will do that for the for the plan that he was.
Have you done any exploration on the original building? Did they even put footings in under?
I'm not sure. I know the architect already seen. He did original building or another original building when they added some sort of. He did that back then and he's. Whatever structural risks have been to be done, that would be the start.
And soon we maxed out on parking.
I mean. Want to talk about parking? He's he has a lot of parking space. He has a lot of business too. Parking spots.
I mean, part. Wonderful that you have a business you usually go on.
Sundays. For some of the footage, we have a parking. Could have maxed it out in many ways. Supposed to be the original plan in ten years ago. Four points, some days. You know, blocking the highway or something, there's extra parking. You prefer any business, it's all accountable. We will park this house.
And as I said, you also still, which is great.
Of people, to be honest, use our market spot. Well, down the block. And our business. When the generous enough to not. Anyone who told them. You see it as capacity. It's not always. Just make it as. Not really.
Do you have any questions with board?
Yeah, what can we add to your lighting? It's. There was one. After the race for Greg. Summer. On summer. Okay, I know that I facing. Not the late. Uh, because our lights up the whole back lane there. I mean, if you go on the other side and look over. Only if you go to the turn. And he's on the same with somebody that sense. You'll be able to say. If you run out. We're looking at still way more. Public gas station, everybody. I think the rise of the ball. Getting over there. Now on the boats. Always think of other than just that. Wolves and. Yeah, and he made you roll and he made you roll in the back, right? Did you roll?
I got a couple of questions. Number one, this is a commercial building. Are you putting in the commercial sprinklers system with the third floor? Not a life safety system, a regular. Also. With the. If there is a fire. If people are on the third floor. How do they get out?
So these are all very fair question. That's all building code related. And we have discussed it with the architect. And it will be just a part of the problem. So there will be interior staircase that will be high that will take you down for the first wall. When that goes through the kitchen or through the restaurant to dining area. We'll be planning going down the.
Now, what usually happens on commercial buildings? If they live with fire, it happens in the kitchen. And we don't know about it, and then it works right up. So I'm really looking forward. Another set of, you know. Almost an outside. Outside. Staring fire escape or something. That God forbid, somebody doesn't. Get trapped. And it's a very small building. And. It's going to eat up a lot of space. To staircase. To come back. So I think that's something where I think it's great what you're doing. But safety is the biggest concern for me.
We'll take another look at the building to see what what applies for that when we thought the building for requires and how we do more than that. Typically, these fire lines will be interconnected, so there will be a power. Allow the law for just for. Yeah, so that's the early direction.
The chairman, I have anything? I'd like to make a motion. On which part? No more construction can be done. Indeed, done on this project. Much time as the violation is corrected and it. Store the storage unit that it uses now be removed from the.
Can you use a bathroom, explain that the story? So that's part of collecting the violation where they're in front of the plenty board. Who will go there? That will correct that violation. That's that's what we are.
Right now. Container is painted black or brown. And in front of a long stock container. Is. Green over. Okay, so you're not going to do a damn thing with that. You go, your client, okay? It's not going to do a damn thing other than use that container, wouldn't do nothing else. And it's a violation of the town law. It's not permitted.
Okay, wait a minute, Gary.
Gary, they're they're proposing to. They're proposing to build a building around the container. In other words, the container is in violation, but if they build a wood structure around it. Then it'll be in the building.
And I don't care if it's in the building, it's not permitted on the property.
It will be permitted once it's in the building.
No, it's not. It's not permitted on the property. Your town law does that.
Once it's the building that is permitted, we can't stop them from moving forward in the planning process.
I'm not I'm not saying they can't build a building. I'm just saying he has to remove the container. The container is not permitted on the property.
It isn't inside the building.
Would be allowed if the building is is put around.
You can break the law. Just give it back.
Okay, anybody else? All right. I guess I got no second proposal. Do you have a second? No. Thank you, Brian.
Some more chance.
One more question, you'll be back up to the public hearing at the end. Public hearing, by the way, because we publish it begins at eight thirty.
Everybody's worried about that. Yeah, there'll be a public hearing, everything will discuss then. Until then, everyone can be quiet in the crowd. Or it's not.
Yeah, I would point everything with. Doing a lot. Okay. We we made a we did. I am. There was a misprint on our person. And we added. You know, charm, so we wasn't.
Good evening. We're here last month to kind of. Also to the. Cool. Of this project, everything that was. For. We've shown the issue because we're going to keep this all about talents. We've also provided a written response to the talent to the planner. Just part of this one submission, so we're asking the board if there's any questions, if they're to answer them, otherwise consider. Prodo of this project. One of the one thing that I want to know that was changed of this plan is showing. We had my discussion with the board and with the owners. To have future sports courts on the property, so the related half is proposed. Playfield valuable courts, which is labeled as future. As they're not ready yet to do that, depending on how much funds financing, they'll be able to do. It's not it's not a school that typically plays a lot of sports. But if you want to have abilities, it would happen with that plan. But that may be done maybe in a year, maybe two years, and maybe five. It's there, so we have it on the side. Well, maybe. Maybe seven, I said maybe here, maybe two.
Thing is. You're gonna have how many kids staying there twenty four seven?
It's it will be thirty two kids overnight. When we begin, not twenty four seven, but rather during the week, but this weekend they usually go home.
Right. So you have these kids staying there. I would like to see. Some specificity. Specificity. Let me say that. Okay. Exactly what you're going to do with all the mini site. And then we're going to talk about when. If you're gonna have kids there. Not prison camp.
It's fourteen.
Schedule something in the beginning, something further on. What what particular you're gonna have there? It's not really detailed. As part of your tool. Turns out the rest of the season.
Oh, no, you're paying not five years. It's gonna have to go with the. We go back to the fourth, you know. Don't the kids the kids happy and all the baby.
I mean, they are. So we want more detail on that.
Can I just put a timeline and tell them?
Timeline, what what particular will be there? Basketball or three D. Or whatever else you wish to put in. We want to exactly. Experience shows we need to have. Gales everything down. From there.
Or can we make that the condition that? It comes from whether it's approvals or it's any ones from CEO that. Timeframe for the books to add it in.
We can have, we can do it anyway. Anything to work. But even something. Basketball. Cost you nothing. And should have something out there to do to begin with, and then. We're not looking at full. Full gym here. Not looking for major force.
Bobby's relative there. He's the principal of that school.
Are people online or have trouble?
They're loaded today. Be louder, big. There are people listening in online and.
Good evening. It's so we don't have. Words that. Bump around, bump around. Sack or whatever it is, whatever it just. Just told. The call. Have to put in something that's very expensive. And you don't know what. They're gonna have you right now.
We're not looking for anything elaborate, anything super special, not major. Something. I don't know, looking out to.
We have twenty seventy.
Right.
So I I think if we can. Consider that rules, what the condition. Cycle will be signed, won't be answered. What the people say. And a segment to the.
Okay, anyone else want to turn in on that? We've been public hearing for a couple of seconds. How about the station site plan evidence? Greg, have you been to it?
I plan the basic site plan. We have direct space. If you open it, the layout seems to work pretty well. We've done some architectural, I think we've got some architectural. Front architectural land area. Last meeting, we've had some architectural. I think the consultant reviewed it. Danny? Yeah, salt review the architectural stuff. They make a recommendation for a couple of windows or something over here. I don't know, I'll find it for you. It was, I thought there was something.
It's okay. Little something.
Yeah.
We didn't have a formal resolution. You could do it tonight.
We.
Did we do that one?
That one.
Drop that deck and a draft additional.
That's all, yes, okay. Don't you people walk us through it?
So we have proposed negative declaration for enlisted action. Twenty acres, twenty eight acre site in eighty seven. Hundred square foot, full facility with sleeping orders. For seater. There's no impacts. Anticipated anticipated for significant adverse impacts on lands. Wetlands, stormwater, impact groundwater, impact on flooding, air or geographical features. We also reviewed animals, resources for aesthetic, agricultural, historic. Open space recreation, impact on critical environmental areas, transportation. And there was no impacts that were verse that were determined. Same goes for energy, odor and light, human health. I moved through, I won't bore you with all the details, but anyone has questions, they are on the draft net deck. So based on that, the two thirty nine came back from the county. Claim there was, you know, other than just the minor. Items, there was nothing left for local determination. Went through the parts two and three, and again, with that, there was no adverse impacts that would stop a negative deck this project.
Did you change that line on that I talked about? With the recreation?
That that's what we were discussing, so I I'm going to put in, assuming the board's good with it, the condition we just mentioned that. The applicant provide detail on the recreation space prior to approvals and signing, which could be ball fields, you know, any. Any number of, you know, recreational.
But that would be the site plan wasn't genetic, right? Was there something that you wanted reflected in the neck deck?
No, we don't need it in the neck deck, we can put it in the regular resolution. Okay. It was an harmless action, I believe.
Yes.
We didn't need coordinated review on that.
It was a coordinated review.
Okay.
Yep.
Nothing came back?
Nothing came back on the coordinated review, went out May ninth, twenty twenty four. Lead agency was taken August eighth, twenty twenty four. Never said, no, no impacts, no. No one interceded, so if the board's comfortable, I think you can report with the neck deck.
Okay, we accept a motion for a negative declaration of environmentally visiting. Make the motion into a second. Any discussion? All favor? Any negatives? The eyes have it. So we've done the negative, that's the environmental review. We we speak in jargon up here. So it's not always understand what we're doing. The every project that comes in front of us. Is subject to seek the state environmental quality review act. And that's what we've been discussing, is there anything environmental? Involved in it, and the answer was nothing was found. And we gave it a negative declaration of the. What that was all about. Okay, that's done, now about the main site plan.
All right, so with the site plan resolution, we're in an REC zone. Where schools are permitted use subject to site plan review. Walk through the seater items that we've already covered, so I will start. The area. That you're most interested in, which is going to be the standard conditions, which would be adherence to any and all changes requested by planning board members, town halls, per staff. Planning board attorney, town engineer, town planner, or other technical consultants during the review and approval process. Implementation of any mitigation measures referred to an environmental assessment form in the negative declaration, a stop by planning board, payment of all fees. And according to the town B schedule, we please move recreation. And then an offer of dedication to the town and easements for roads, utilities, et cetera, et cetera, that may be shown on the plans or is determined necessary by a town engineer or superintendent of pipelines. Site specific. We're going to change what I had as section one, that is going to turn into what we just discussed a few minutes ago, which is just going to be prior to signing of the plan. There needs to be a solid detail on what the recreation facilities will be. Second one being no site disturbance or construction shall take place until state discharge elimination. System or speedies general permit stormwater discharges from construction activity is issued by the New York State DEC. No site disturbance or construction associated with the proposed septic system may proceed to receipt. Until received in New York State DEC general permit for private, commercial, and institutional wastewater facilities. Adherence to any regulations requiring New York State Department of Health approval of all well and private water system. And the appearance of the building shall be consistent with the renderings provided to the planning board and incorporate any modifications suggested by the town's architectural consultants. So those would be the site specific and general conditions.
Billy, can I add one more? I'm still getting caught up to speed, but I'm looking at the notes from the last meeting where it said. Up to eighty students, but not to exceed a hundred. Is that something that you want included in the? The conditional that so the number of students not to exceed a hundred?
Not that.
Without coming back to us. Would it be acceptable to the board members to have? And where we voted on to have my signature. Associate chairman. Signature pending resolution of the details. Of the recreation. That's acceptable to board members? Yes, no? In that case, with that proviso. A motion for. Site plan approval.
Additional.
Additional site, well, with that with that condition. Okay, we'd love to have you back.
Condition upon that condition.
With that condition, a motion for approval.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? Okay, I have a second, Eddie again. All favor? The eyes have it.
Thank you. I just want to thank the boards very much for this. I've been waited for for a while.
We got there.
Very glad we're rendering of the building. Here. You want to come see? Yeah, we can go if you have. We have one, yeah, you can come see it. And there was some, I think there was some architectural notes that the consultant gave me.
Okay, we done with that, we go on the next one. Let me just say junior subdivision. Separated there into the site plan and then subdivision. We're simply working on the subdivision tonight. We've done that thing.
I'll do that. I get. Oregon State Junior, there were two applications, one for a subdivision. Oregon State Junior, uh, there were two applications, one for subdivision and one for site plan, with the next one for both of them. Uh, this month, we're here to, to get a subdivision taken care of, which is basically, it's currently it's three lots. Uh, it's basically being combined and then resubdivided into four lots. Well, this not being for the future deployment development that still needs to be approved by the planning board, and then three single family home lots on uh, Old Little Brook Road and forty two.
Essentially, we're creating lots to, but you thought. We're taking away the other three.
Yes.
Okay, it's, it's remainder of the property. Hey, go ahead. Um, Greg, can you run the other vision?
Yeah, I, I have a couple concerns, maybe you can help me with Joel, the uh. This, this section here. Me and Hayden walked this section in the back, I mean, lot number, number one, lot number one and two is. I don't know what kind of drainage is here, I'm sure it's gonna have to all be engineered, but this is also very wet right here, there was a, some lot of water coming down from uh. From Cardinal Grove and the Grove in the back, and there's a, a drainage swale that runs along this, this uh, entrance to Central Park down there, which. Probably gonna need to be, it, it proved in order to get the drain properly. Uh, and then drainage across this road here. Um. My other concern was is. This parcel here, the bigger lot that you're gonna make for the subdivision. Right now, truly uses it, I believe the entrance does come up through and they use it for their parking lots, I'll say for, for school.
They use that for the mission, but it's not a business tool or anything, and, and add a tool, that's the beginning of it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, we're not, we're not developing this property right at the moment, the bigger property.
I would, I would do with that, 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 that.
Oh. So when we do develop this bigger property, I just know it's gonna create an issue for that additional parting that rule has, so.
Which that was as part of. Cool super bowl with.
Correct, yes, yes.
Alright. So um, originally, we had another lot up here. But, I mean, we did it with one omission and everything, it, it uh. It just sorts out that it's. Probably be more beneficial to have one larger lot with a wetland on it than divide it into two, because then it will be tough to fit it in with the wetlands without any disturbance to the wetland, so we eliminated the lot from. The original proposed subdivision. And there's no. It's no, it's originally there was another line. Here to create these, these lots and two, two lots, but we moved that lot and now it's one larger lot, which is almost like.
Is there gonna be any uh, any ingress or egress for the bigger lot, one of this Little Brook Road or no?
No. Uh, as you can see on the, on the bigger lot, there's a large wetland here.
Yeah.
So that, that's kind of limiting us from even connecting it. You have to have that bumper, the vegetative bumper for the duplex development, so it's not gonna be connected, this is just three. Uh, three simple subdivision lots. Which is not gonna be tied into the rest of the subdivision.
Okay, where will we, we'll call it lots for alone, which, in effect, we're creating it. Uh, where, where's the entrance to it, how, how will be?
So Little Brook Road, that's four, that's Route forty two, that's Little Brook Road. So that will be, all the entrances will be all from Little Brook.
No, the, the remaining property.
For this one, oh, for the bigger one?
Yeah.
There's an existing driveway right across from Willow Heights Road. That will be improved due to already went out there, um, there are some improvements to be done to that throughout the plan, so, so that's, that's part of that project.
The O T has already been notified, right?
Yep.
Good.
See all eighty uh. Eighty band will.
Yes.
For the eighty band. Did there used to be a? Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. If, if. Oh.
Arthur, can I add some procedural?
Absolutely.
Issues discussion, um, we had a discussion with um, Dylan, you'll probably recall that. We haven't seen this project for two years, I think it was July twenty twenty two that there was the public hearing, and at that point, there was the um, additional lot. Um, I don't have wifi here, but according to my files. All of the um, immediately notices and the seeker was done for the entire project, the subdivision and the duplex was sort of combined. So there may be a potential seeker segmentation issue by separating out the subdivision and doing that as a separate approval without completing seeker on the whole project. So I don't know if, you know, if Dylan has anything else to add, and, and whether or not we can move forward with the subdivision separate from the duplex, just again procedurally.
We had, we had a public hearing. We had a public hearing on essentially a different project. You may need another one.
We, we actually had, we actually had on the, we have submitted two applications. And two, two E A X, one for the subdivision and one for the deploy development. We had a public hearing, everything was noticed separately for the subdivision and separately for the. So the project was kind of separate, but the lead agency notices that we sent out included both of that, we could just make sense to include both of them, so. I mean, I got that's a question to do.
Yeah, do you have any uh, thoughts as to whether or not, uh. You know, should we start over just with the subdivision, and again, it's not. Doesn't require a coordinated review or anything like that, so it's not like you have to send out other notices, but just to kind of keep it clean, it's.
Yeah, I, I know when we spoke, I, I think we were under the understanding that it was all done together, so if they were done separate as different pieces and they were segmented in that way. It would be a different situation, so I think we would be able to move forward, it hasn't been some time, um, so I don't know if the board wants to think about another public hearing or anything like that, it'd be up to you, but. I mean, I think based on those facts, since it wasn't a full application, they were brought together, you theoretically could do. The subdivision, and then at some later date, if the facts are correct, you can forward on the actual um, projects.
So the public hearing, the way it was done originally is still, still be the same. Exatically.
Correct, yeah.
For the subdivision.
I mean, it's for, it's, it's actually for less lots than it was, and we did the public hearing, right, it was for the.
You said four lots.
I think, I think, I think at a public hearing, we already had an application, because it was kind of way in the beginning, um. We had discussed about one one there, and then we decided to remove one of the lots.
And the reality is for the duplex development, obviously, you know, there's a lot more details to work out, and there's issues with both water and sewer capacity in the South Wolfburg, you know, services, so. Who knows, it may be years before you're able to move ahead with that portion, right?
Can I ask a question? Look, um, Greg, you were referring to, was there one of the blue lots? That there's uh, drainage issues?
Yeah.
So lot. Between lots one and, one and two and three, I guess you wanna call, they're two smaller lots on the left side of Little Brook. The road right now, I mean, it's a, it's an old, it's a dirt road, maybe it had some culverts across it, maybe it's just gravel, but the. So, the, the road is damming the water, so it's very wet, lots one and two are very wet right now, uh.
So wouldn't it be better off to figure out before we approve something like this? That let's figure out what we can do to resolve the issues?
I don't know if anybody's looked into it, those are just, that's just my observation, so.
Well.
I mean, yeah.
If, if you can see something, you, you wanna say something. Let's see what we can do about, um. Figuring out what we can do for the scenario. If you, if you understand what I'm trying to say.
You have time to look into it?
That's, that's all I wanna say, I mean, it is a, it is a simple subdivision on an existing town, although it will have to be somewhat improved. Uh, it's by the, the board to consider, it's a little subject to the town, to the project engineer. Going out there with the town engineer and uh, reviewing anything that needs.
Yeah, sure.
If you're ha- if now you're, you have separate owners on the different lots. And you're pushing the water from one lot into the big lot. There's gonna be a problem for the future.
Right, so what I said is, prior to the planning board chair signing any maps, so that we can file and record any subdivision maps. The project engineer should go out with the town engineer. And uh, see what issues are, if there are any issues, and if anything needs to be done. They should be on the same page, and then the planning board chair can sign a map, so they can't subdivide it. Before that is taken place.
Or over or something is required.
Chime, chime in?
I mean, yeah, I'll, I'll have to go out with the project engineer, look at the road and see, I mean, when we went out. A year ago, we didn't look at the road, we just looked at the neighboring parcel that has drainage problems, the ditch basically. Ends and the road appeared to have no pulver put in, it was put in, I don't know, thirty years ago, and they just put in gravel and. It's damming the road and it flows over the road when it rains, and then it. So it, it basically needs a pulver, and then the road needs improvement, so they would need an agreement with the town to install it. And improve the road, and that should be part of the approval, isn't it, very?
Now, is the water gonna be pushed on the big lot? Or is it gonna run down the road and increase?
The neighbor on the south side is who had us go out, because his property is getting wet, because it's not draining. Um, it looks like, if, if there was a culvert there, collapsed, you know, an old steel culvert. So it would improve the neighbor's uh, situation with water running onto his property, and there's already drainage going on to this parcel, so. If there needs to be an easement for the drainage on the parcel shown on the subdivision, that can be added.
Yeah.
Wherever the location of that culvert is.
Would, would that have? Who would be responsible, would the town have to be responsible, since you're?
Well, it's already the town running, so. The applicant will submit a plan to improve it, to, to do the development, the town wouldn't do the funds to improve. An unimproved road or anything.
The developer, the applicant would have to see.
That's what I said, they would need an agreement, the developer to improve, make the improvements.
Cross the bridge now and handle it before you get going, so you know where you're at. Instead of trying to. Do something afterward.
We, we did fall too, we did uh, address some uh. Some water drainage issues from the Grove Estates, which is behind this property, the water was coming down into these lots from the Grove property, and we redirected that water into uh. Uh, another water course that diverses the water around the property, so that did help. That did help with the amount of water that was coming down into these two lots, so.
And Joel, the wetland sanitation was done in late twenty twenty one, I'm trying to remember.
Uh, either twenty twenty one, I mean, I checked about two, twenty twenty one or twenty twenty two.
And was there any kind of, are they flagged, was there any kind of jurisdictional determination?
There's no, it's, I mean, it's an isolated, uh, wetland here, it's about, points out where they could, wetlands.
I would just say, if it's, if it's not um, under the Army for jurisdiction, if. One of the conditions could be. A note on the subdivision plans, you know, the location of the wetlands, you know, not to fill them, because once these lots are subdivided and sold. A lot of people don't realize, and it might just be a wet spot, and be like, oh, I'm gonna get some dirt and I'm gonna fill it in, so there should be something, you know, with the parcel, with the future owner, no. Shouldn't be disturbed.
Over twenty twenty one.
Thank you. Is everybody okay with that?
That's very good.
Have we done lead agency in all hours?
Yeah.
Separate?
Yeah, again, I don't have wifi, so I can't bring my records up, but.
July fourteenth of twenty two.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, what was that?
July fourteenth of twenty twenty two was lead agency.
Yeah, and that was, I think, the public hearing as well, though.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the last time we've seen it, was um, was since then.
And it was sent for two thirty nine then.
Yeah.
Okay, came back.
Came back local permit.
Anything turned up on the uh, figure?
Nope, I don't think there were any, no, I don't think there were any comments.
So we can do a negative deck on it anyway, man.
And then you wanna queue it up for uh, conditional approval at the next meeting, so we can work out the language?
Uh, yeah, sure. All right, let's do the seeker first, um. There's a type, well, what's the name of this? A motion for a negative deck. Uh, on Irvington State's junior subdivision, make a motion, wait here a second?
Second.
All favor?
Yeah.
Any against? Okay, that, that's out of the way. Um. I'm gonna do for a conditional. Approval, work out the details between now and the next meeting. Who, who's gonna volunteer to write that up? Who started it?
Are you open to that one?
I can both together.
Okay. Is there any of them on the board, that anything more to say? Did it land?
That's my pretty job. It'll land all night, yeah, yeah.
Dylan, you'll take care of the resolutions?
Not a problem.
If you work on meeting, anybody have anything added that they want in their resolution?
Very simple. I got, I got a question. Does, uh, does anybody know that went in the town loan? I would actually own there. Sometimes if you go. Fifty feet?
Yeah. And it's. Yeah, it's not a real, but as you said, it's an ownership, I think.
In that case, we're done for tonight.
Thank you.
Let me guess, you're not the next one?
He's not.
Those are both farms then. It's just for the board information. We gave them one year. Let's see, we've committed on this. For the supervisor, they come back, so we can check if there's any, any problems, no unusual application, we wanted to see if anything.
I have receipts?
Yeah.
Yeah. Need some?
I would.
Been interesting and fun. Towards. Keep on building, like the. Unity of what we're doing with uh. Spreading food and showing people like where their. Power was produced and, um. Have access to, this one really, like, awesome, this last year. So we're here, believe just for review, I think, for what our show project was. Um. We had to go and study board. Just to make sure that we had some special approval, because we did have some accommodations that were on the property. Um. Been a very small channel, this is to be honest, where we thought originally it was gonna be a larger channel, um. The biggest element of our business has just been the daily business on the weekends, and uh. We provided a C S A, which is a community support act over, institution to, we need to institution. So right now, we're providing twenty two families in the community with food on the basis of simple pool. Um. It's possible, like, watch kids them out, like, and say, like, what is that, like? Burabi? And they're like, no, that, and I'm like, a carrot? Like, they, they think of carrots like the baby carrot that comes. Or, like, you know, it's, our parents, I'd like to say, like, are, they're ugly, but, like, so, uh, and they're delicious, and then. Uh, we'll take them to the, you know, one of the gardens and have them dig it out and, like, show them, like. How we've been amending the soils and, like, how loose it is right now versus what it was three years ago, and, you know, literally, like. Step on the hard clay that we have that they're parking on, and then show them, like, this was that, and because we're doing everything, um, this we done since then, we're cool.
We had a few overnight guests?
A few, just a few, um, we've been doing this, we've been doing it as like a, kind of like a organic marketing, like I said, like. We thought that it was gonna be sort of a channel of business, but um, it's also our home, so kind of gets a little, it's, we don't think we're. People are on the property, like, we're open twelve to six, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and after those, you know. At six oh one, we're like, ready, but, but uh, we had to have some interest, um, with people that have been, I mean, it's mostly just been. People have been about the project for, you know, U N S, we've been in a creation of it, um. And it's been pretty, for that part, it's been pretty chill, and I think that's where we're gonna kind of move forward with the, the hope moving. Um. Progressiveness that we would like to, from the board, anyway, working order, farm stand right now, or farm stands move. Um, it's kind of a temporary thing that we thought was gonna be. A little bit, like, just kind of an app, but um, I think that. What we've seen with the reaction from the community that actually, like, the full retail working order. Be. For us, and, and to provide more exposure for what we're doing. We're not proposing that right now, that'll be soon, but uh.
I think, yeah, one thing is.
Yeah, exactly.
A question on the board. Now, because we're doing things sort of back with. I have to check with Dylan with this. Can we have an approval pending? Public hearing. Nothing in the public hearing, no. The approval becomes part of it.
Yeah, I would just um, make the public hearing. To. Not another uh, you know, whole business review of it, but at least just confirm, you know, some public hearings happened, and. You know, everything's happy, we don't get any, any feedback, and then just approve it there.
We need to do the motion now. The motion for uh permanent. Especially used for the.
So make it subject and then just.
Subject to the outcome of the. Okay, anybody have any objections to that? If there's anybody speaks negatively, we have detail, then we have to put it over for another meeting. No. Nobody, nothing negative, we can go ahead and come from. Okay? Say motion please. Well, I haven't said he doesn't. One favor? Again. Okay, with any luck, we'll be done. Good day.
So just so I understand, we have to, so we're urban moving forward.
Like in public hearing, that's gonna happen uh later.
Oh, okay, case anybody at the neighborhood.
Right. Give me that thing that it, you don't have to come back. What's that?
Yeah, you just said, see, and then after the public hearing, there's no issue, it will be approved. If there is, we may have more votes next month.
Sure, all right.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Camp Westneadum, request reapproval. Site plan previously approved. Getting two one hundred by thirty four dormitory. Five eighty four by twenty five staff building. Approved T five temporary. Carolina's permanently, who we got that orange?
Sorry.
Um, good evening, Joel Collier and uh, we should understand project manager for Camp Westneadum. Uh, this is, Camp Westneadum is on Solo Lake Road and Rosemont Road. We will head back and. Please wait to receive the approval for ten ten rates to become permanent. Five additional staff housing building. And for the dormitory, front house building for the, for the. Uh, we were back and forth with. Engineere view, DOH, D C. Received comments from them probably about a year ago, but uh they didn't. Uh, it's found. Sadly enough, so that we can have this approval, but the waiting on the one we have, Google. To are back here now and asking for the end of the site. Lasting for reapproval and many of the sidelines to also include a new rabbi's house. And an addition is more different to the dining room going. Uh, and two decks that's shown on the outside. Dylan, would you uh? Here to take this one?
Um, yeah, I think I was engaged on the um original project. I think we have. Two issues. Um, one is whether or not. Put your ear for a new, you know, sort of reapproval because your prior approval expired. Uh, or if the site plan um is still valid, invested, and we're just looking for it and. So perceivably, we'll have to sort of figure out which. Just the the way to go. Can you explain a little bit about? What you thought was previously and what work, if any, you've done towards that other than making the temporary classrooms permanent? Is that the main?
There wasn't anything done besides besides, uh, you know, we have the classes over there, but any, you know, the new movements, we were not gonna do until we have the C and D which approval.
Okay.
And continue. So that that happened.
So essentially, the old approval has expired, so we're starting from scratch, such. Starting.
Okay, I mean, it's.
Considering a new application, even though it's. Um, so with that. In mind, the one thing that um I wanna communicate with Keystone on. Um, is you may recall that um. This camp, I believe, sends its wastewater to the Mountaindale plant, even though you're a stone's throw from Woodbridge.
Yes.
Um, so since the approval in twenty twenty two. Last year, we were asked to do a capacity analysis of the Mountaindale wastewater treatment plant. Um, and that plant is is basically right now, um currently very close to capacity. Um, it's also received some um EPA non-compliance notices. It means some work to kind of stay in compliance. So I think we're gonna need updated flow numbers from you, um because I I imagine the rabbi's house is not gonna be, you know, sort of that much and. Um, the original improvements, uh, I think was something like fifty thousand gallons a day, roughly you're estimating.
I mean, total, total up to fifty thousand. I mean, currently, the, I believe, the current usage is about thirty thousand.
Okay.
And with these improvements, it would go up to. It it's really wouldn't go up to fifty thousand. I think it's like forty, like in the low forties. But the design for a pump station or anything was to uh accommodate up to fifty thousand.
Because according to Penn's last capacity report, there was about sixty thousand gallons a day of, you know, sort of. Capacity, you know, um and that's after. The there was a couple of large um residential projects in Mountaindale that had since hooked up to the system. They were just uh under construction at that point. Um, so I think we're just gonna have to take a fresh look at the. The flow numbers, make sure there's enough sewage capacity um to, you know, to handle this and, you know, get sort of an opinion from Keystone. About that.
I think there was some penetration problems too.
Well, I think that's that's part of the issue as to why uh there's not as much capacity at the plant is because of the ionized issues. I think most of it is coming from uh. Mountaindale Park or whatever that that. Development is. So to the extent that the town can take some steps to reduce ionized, then, you know, they're.
Forty-four thousand gallons, but.
Forty-four thousand, okay. So I don't know, hey, do you have any, do you wanna add to that?
Not a, not additional forty-four thousand either.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything done? Between, yeah, between the third power and this one?
Only thing that I've been done on the, on the fab earlier was installing a fence, you know, a nice fence. I don't think that's by, I really think the property really brought a really nice uh.
Mm-hmm.
Fence.
Yeah, they did, which is to me, they moved the garbage dumpster.
Yes.
Back to back. Which made a big difference to be thrown out of it.
We can ask about a uh. A sewer, a meter on a sewer.
Okay.
That was current, if there was a meter on the sewer.
Yeah.
Do you know if there is?
And if there isn't, if one could be installed.
I think that was part of the last set off.
That's what I, I think we knew that.
There's, there's meter on the man, so we would have established some someone.
Okay.
That would be helpful, at least on the baseline.
Yeah.
Um, so I think the only thing that we can do at this point, um. I don't have a hard copy of the file with me. Did you submit basically a full application and E I F or just the revised?
There's a nice D A F, but I can submit it, I can submit it.
Yeah, just submit a whole new package, new application and E I F.
Can you submit this year's current meter readings for usage?
Yeah. Yeah, we can submit it.
That would help.
Yeah.
See that.
Yes.
Yeah, and we have updated flow data uh for the Mountaindale plant since twenty twenty two, so things, you know, sort of may have changed and. It fluctuates based on how much rain yet and any, and any given year, so. So I think that's the main issue is just sewer capacity.
So the last time, uh, do we need, I guess we'll need another public hearing for that or? Letting around, we didn't have anyone come up.
I mean. Five staff housing is substantial.
Yeah.
Was the last time too, but yeah, it is especially.
Yeah.
Um, so uh, and this will have to go to the county if you didn't have a view again. Because it's close to the missile boundary.
Yep. So you wanna come back to the next meeting with a sort of a full new application? We can do lead agency two thirty nine, schedule a public hearing and. Off you run.
We got a public hearing scheduled for the next meeting?
Okay.
I mean, we have, I mean, we have a full completed, I mean, set plan.
Well, I don't see a reason why not. On this particular one, because.
Yeah, we have a.
You've had it before and. Don't see any of the public hearing.
So you want to send me to two thirty nine and I'll.
Uh, I'll do the two thirty nine, I'll send you so you can submit.
And I'll do the public hearing next month. So make sure you do the updated E I F because the county can do that with the uh submission.
We'll do an updated E I F. Um, we have a long form for that.
Yeah. No, that's perfect. So next meeting, public hearing, um we hopefully will look at your back from the two thirty nine, we can do lead agency and then. Review the sewer, you know, uh, numbers and have a little bit more discussion. That's on right?
I'd like that, Roger, uh, the board on the public hearings.
But.
Second, second favor. Okay, just to make it official.
Okay.
Can you just tell me, can you spell it?
At least P L I S H A. No, it's L E W E N S T E I N.
Thank you.
Oh, hold on. Well, that comment?
Rosemont, thanks for it to we're into wood.
Yes.
Yeah, it's so, it's impossible, which is. It is now, it's impossible to, but just to enter into wood.
Uh, yeah, Woodbridge won't take anymore either. That's what Rosemont actually, they want to expand and.
Is that in the village or Woodbridge that property?
No, it's an outside user.
That's so.
Yeah, so it's in Ballsburg.
So the sandbags, where the sandbag will be in the.
Yeah.
That's. That's not being used anymore.
Yeah, but that was in the village of Wood.
Oh.
No, Woodbridge is way down.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're right, it's closer to the Woodbridge treatment plant than it is Mountaindale, but that's just.
That would resolve a lot of issues. There's eight inch line going right there.
Yeah, we double checked out the other deck.
Doesn't make sense.
It didn't make sense to me either, but it, yes, they could be, because those mine came down into Woodbridge and this camp went the other way.
Thank you.
I think they, we need a sewer, not a lot.
Okay, next one is Matero Road. Now, this is. Our discussion, you get your chance at the end of the meeting. And we said, it's at the last meeting that we set a lot. Seven.
Seven residential.
Seven residential lot plus the uh subdivision.
Um, so I just, for the public's benefit, just we got.
What's your name? I'm sorry.
Connor McCormick and with Polyurethane Engineering and Design on the project engineering and the project. So again, uh, the project is named Matero Road. It's a residential cluster subdivision. It's located on the north side of Matero Road on Tax Lock. Twenty-six dash one dash sixty-four point two. It's in the A G zoning district. Uh, the total lot is a hundred and fifty-five point one-nine acres in size. Currently, it's a mix of woodlands, open fields, and uh there's some wetlands and it's a vacant lot. Uh, prior to the last meeting, uh, our office prepared a six lot conventional subdivision plan that was submitted uh to the planning board. Uh, that was, that plan was complying to the town code and bulk requirements to display that six conventional lots. Um, the lot, excuse me, that the project can support six conventional lots. Um, at the eight slash eight meeting, uh, that was confirmed by the planning board and that's where we uh. Decided that the six was uh acceptable and we're progressing with the application as it's currently proposed, which is a cluster subdivision. For the town code, there is uh an additional. Lot that can be achieved by going to a cluster as opposed to a conventional subdivision. So as far as uh the application stands today. Um, the applicant's proposing seven residential lots, uh, and an eighth lot that is going to be the uh. Non-residential just for conservation, um, even an area. Um, of the project site, which is a hundred and fifty-five point one-nine acres. A hundred and twenty-four point three-two acres are going to be within that conservation air easement. An additional three point eight acres are uh consist of a buffer area that wrap. Um, the frontage of the property and the uh. The sides of the um residential lots. Um, both of those together encompass eighty-two point six percent of the total project area is for conservation and maintaining buffers. An additional one point six acres is gonna be right away dedication. Um, and then the remainder of the project, twenty uh five point four-two acres is for the residential uh lots. Uh, no area or use that uh varieties are being requested as part of the uh application. Um, to service uh these seven residential lots, or um, yeah, seven residential lots. Um, a proposed private uh road. Has been um established. That's a dead end road. Um. The engineering and uh. Design criteria have been back and forth with the uh Keystone on that, so that has been worked out since the last meeting. Um, additionally, each uh residential is gonna be serviced by its own individual well and septic systems. The uh. On-site soil testing has been conducted and um the. Fully engineered systems are on plans. Uh, stormwater mitigation area is proposed. Um, we are in the process of completing the SWIP that's required for this project. Um, each of the lots is proposed to have a four-bedroom uh residential house. Uh, no wetland disturbance is proposed. Um, in total, nine point two acres of soil disturbance is required to uh construct the project, which. Um, when compared to the total project area is less than six percent of the lot. Um. I guess that besides, that's really the only update since the last ever here. We're seeking feedback from the uh public and. Board and um this plan wasn't submitted to the board, but this is really just talking about what we. Uh, went over at the last meeting, we're showing the seven residential lots. And then uh an eighth lot for the conservation area, which previously was not its own lot. That is the only uh change to the publication.
And you're gonna have a homeowner's association.
Homeowners Association.
Rights to the conservative property.
Correct. So all of the seven residential lots um will have access to the conservation area. We're proposing a uh. Access right in between lot three and four, so uh, you know, they can all make it out to the private road.
Could you turn that for the two?
Protein made lock it, but um, at the end of the cul-de-sac. Just uh on lot three. Um, right parallel to the lot line separating three and four, that did a. Uh, pedestrian access, um, a fifteen feet line that we're proposing right now, so that, um, you know, lots going to five, six, seven. Walk up to that.
Hey, question.
I think it's a question, I'm still getting what uh Steve. Um, looking at the minutes from the last meeting, um, it sounds like the board classified the action as an enlisted action under secret. Um, declared themselves in the agency uh through the two-three-nine referral, is that correct? You guys have the add data statement and all the rest of that kind of stuff to the county.
Um, I believe we did.
So in two thirty-nine hasn't come back yet, uh.
I have not.
Okay, so just make sure that it was here that when the two thirty-nine was sent. Uh, it's because usually we send it because it's supposed to account in the road. In this case, it's because it's adjacent to an act districts.
Clarify for the audience, the two thirty-nine is a county review. Perhaps they do it in addition, and that their thoughts on it. Uh, whether they want changes or whatever, so we would say two thirty-nine, we put it counting as you. Sorry.
That's all right. The only other thing that I wanted to verify is because it is a realty subdivision. Um, even though it was an enlisted action, it's required to be coordinated review. So I just wanted to confirm that are you gonna send lead agency notices out? The D C, D O H.
Um.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't get that. No, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Uh, because it's a realty subdivision, according to Department of Health. It coordinated review is required. Um, so you guys declare yourself lead agency, but you just have to make sure that you send those.
We'll follow.
Okay, thank you.
Her way to turn this thing off.
Even as we speak.
But Ivan, just send me a copy of the notice.
Pardon?
That's okay. Send me a copy of the notice when.
It doesn't show up.
Yeah, it takes a second. That's all I have on.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
At the last meeting, they discussed about. Large tree management. And about um, you know, going through the property for. But then afterwards. Where would your role be to bring in logging charts and everything?
Um, well, it hasn't been designed for logging trucks because, um, but we could. I guess widen the, what right now is a fifteen foot, uh, wide at this easement, um. It probably the stolen road to get back there.
They, for logging, they would have to submit the permit to the building department for review and approval.
Let me point out, the applicant hasn't asked. It's just speculation or.
With, with how large this lot is. Depending on where any potential logging would. Happen would kind of dictate where you'd want the access really. We don't want to propose a permanent road here. If someone wants a lot here in the future, doesn't make sense.
But there are no concrete plans to do any logging.
It's not part of this application, no.
Yeah, the question. Okay, then, uh, standby.
Thank you.
Okay, I have number eight. Mountain press. Commended to previously approved site plan for mobile home car. R E C one, twenty-two point five acres location, out there. We have anybody representing?
It would be Tom, Tom Oliver, eight craftsmen.
Do they have some questions on that plan? Well, maybe next time. Okay, without that includes our old business, new business. I don't want to butcher the name. It's Brad, Brad Dunn. Good question. We do have a two lot subdivision. R E C down fifty-seven point seven six acres. Parked your road, not now.
This, uh, spring re-purchase of property. Um, that's about sixty-eight acres. Um. It's, uh, two separate purchases that, and the property used to be. Probably used to be, uh. Two, two, um. Two separate lots. And they combined, I think, in two thousand and fifteen. And basically, we were looking to purchase it. It was perfect for us. We basically purchased them. We want to just bring it back to what it was prior to two thousand and fifteen. Um, there's a road. Uh, uh, park your road going right across that property. Uh, basically, we want to just keep more families going to be on the south side of the road. Take a family on the north side of the road. Nothing's been changed. Just people.
There's a house on each side.
There's a house on each side with, uh, with the sewer.
That's the use at the time.
Are currently one is being used, the second one is not. It's like a thunderstorm.
And the acreage on the, uh.
The other one is about five acres. Okay, four point nine two at one part. I saw another spot is like five point two nine, let me check. And, uh, the, the bigger one is sixty-one.
Yeah, I got a question. Number one. Is this, is this, uh, where there's one house on the lake side? And on the other side, there's three or four bungalows with a swimming pool.
That is about two bungalows with their unused pool.
So what is your plan for that, for that?
Yeah, probably just going to use it for the weekend homes, um, make something so we can hang out on the weekends. I live in Brooklyn and we just want to come in.
So years ago, there's a wetland over the area, the swimming pool.
Find it.
What's that?
I'm trying to find it. Yeah, I don't know.
And across the street, all the septic. For those bungalows, went across the street to the other lot. So that has to be pre-engineered and you check down, you know. Because, um.
I'm not aware of these, uh, things. I know when I was purchasing it, basically both homes have. A well and a, and a septic. Uh, I tried to find this well from the, the one that you're talking about. You know, specific location, because I'm actually like. Firing somebody by the pool, right? Yeah, I'm not aware of the septic is not functioning correctly.
Because across the street, the high side. Um, up on top, you have a right of way for the power. And all the way out on the, on the top. I think the power comes in. There's a right of way up there, but. It just needs to be looked into about the.
We will need a site plan with these downs on it usually.
Board requires a site plan with the house location, the well, subject to commit setbacks or any D O A requirements for. Well, separation.
We can't, we can't file it within county without it.
Yeah, and you just the basic, I mean, it doesn't have to. All houses are going to stay.
Yes, nothing's been changed, nothing's been added.
Basically, just get a asphalt survey, but that should outline everything that's there. The building department, if he goes to the building department, we can. Find somebody that can work with to get the planning needs.
Other words, we have. When you file with the county, you have to say where it is, what, what. Where the lines are, where the property boundaries are.
Okay, when I was talking to the building department, uh, basically what they said because it is like a natural division.
So. Yes, it is.
That is certainly with somebody that should have given.
The county won't let you register without.
What, what is your, like, setup immediately? Do they give you directions? Complete what you want to do.
When it was combined in fifteen, there might be a surveyor who did it and they might already have all the info that you can just contact them for.
Well, it'd be filed with the county, right?
Yeah.
And go to the county and see what they have in their records already. Okay, if we're gonna. You'll have to go see, uh. See if they have the maps of this. And, uh, then you can bring them, make an appointment with the building department.
The map that I gave you, I contacted somebody in county, um, it's Jennifer, whatever the name. Um, she's the one that sent me that from the fire, what it used to be. But basically, I want to bring it to that. So if you guys have. That information, nothing is being changed.
Can't find what you need, the county contact the building department, we'll call the county for it, right?
Okay, and then we'll schedule another meeting.
Yeah, well, you would, you would bring the, the paperwork in that you could use, like the survey map. This way, because you're going to need that when you file the subdivide, the county's going to need to see that. They're actually my lawyers that are signed by the, by the chairman and then filed with the county, so. It's easier to dissolve it than put it back. Yeah, so you don't need to, when you dissolve a lot line, you don't have to have the, all this stuff. But when you separate it again, it has to be surveyed out.
On the survey map, uh, so.
And you will need a public hearing.
You will be coming back, yeah. If you can get, we can, we can put you back on for next month. It's not, it may be two months.
Uh, we publish eight thirty is the time for the public hearing, so take your time in the breaks.
Very briefly what you're doing. So, uh, good evening, Joel Conair and Sam Lipschitz, the owner of Sushi Boats. But then there's the existing sushi and bowl place on, uh. What they do, what he's proposing to do is add a third story to their building, uh, and have their own apartment and put a. Twelve, you're like pulling for the building for search. That's, um, that's what they're planning to do.
That's good. All right, did anybody come to the public hearing on Sushi Boat?
You want to explain what we're doing first?
Well, basically, basically, we're getting public input on the project in front of us. Uh, we, we, I'm saying that there's nobody here.
No, there is.
Well, there is.
Yeah, I have.
How many people do we have? Okay, uh, who's it two people?
Uh, Brandon, how old? Uh, nope, we only have one.
James, you, you're going to be our president. Basically, you have three minutes to speak. See, we have a timer. We've been very, very good tonight. Uh, you'll come up to the podium to speak because we have to report. You, you can say your name so we know who it is. If you don't want to say your name, that's all right too. Ready?
Hi, my name is Lesik Nahara, and, um, when I was sitting in the audience, listening to the presentation on Sushi Boat. One of the issues that came up was parking. And I think it's really, really nice that, um, a neighboring business. Said, hey, look, your clients can park in my parking lot. You know, but, um, if, if there really is a concern with parking, I don't think that answer justifies anything. Because one day, the person could say, yep, you could park in my parking lot. But the next day, the person says, don't you dare. Let your client tell him, here, I'm going to have to tell him. Also, besides that, um, what if the business owner self of the neighboring parking lot sells his business to a new owner? And the new owner steps in and says, I don't want your clients parking my parking lot. If they hit somebody, I'm responsible. That's a huge liability. So I think you really need to just look and make sure that, um. They have enough parking, you know? So that's just something that came to mind, and I just figured I'd share my comment with you.
Which we appreciate you doing. Now, uh, what we do here normally is we don't have, we're not going to ask the applicant to answer your question. Any questions that are asked will be done and answered in writing by the next meeting.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
And I just had, we haven't raised the question. Anybody else?
I have Gary Coucher on the line. Barry, can you unmute? Hello, can't hear you. You're still muted. Gary, you're muted. You need to unmute.
Can you hear me now? Yay. My name is Gary Coucher and. No, I, I, I live across the lake from Sushi Boats. I've gone there many times and enjoyed their food many, many occasions. And basically, I, I have a few, I have a few concerns, you know, and it really comes down to that. They haven't really been that good with their neighbors. All the people in our development, which is Shell Drake Shores. Are complaining, basically saying that you leave the lights on at night. In fact, even if you look out right now, there are lights on at Sushi Boats. I don't know who they're serving. They're not serving anybody. They're just lights on. And, and they have them on all summer, really bright. Now they've, 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 uh, got less. But they're very bright all summer. The, my, my bedrooms, my living room all get lit up. And other people are telling me the same things. I, I'm sure that some people will, will, will share. Um. So that's number one is, oh, and the other thing is that about five years ago, there was, we had, there was a meeting and I remember. Uh, at that time, um. You know, that they had wanted something, uh, Sushi Boats had wanted something and they said, okay, you know what? And, and Greg brought up the issue of the, the, the lighting. That the, the lighting is bothersome to people. And they, they said, don't worry, we'll deal with that. Well, as you can see, after five years, the lighting was, is not dealt with and hasn't been dealt with. So I don't, so I'm concerned that, you know, if you're saying you're going to do things, but then they're not done. Okay, so I, I, I really needed a firm commitment, as far as I'm concerned, because you know what? Those lights are illegal. So this is the problem now. What's, why, why are we having allowing illegal things? Why isn't the town dealing with this? In addition, the, we've had a number of nights that there was a u- tremendous amount of noise coming from Sushi Boats. Specifically from the tent. I remember there were three nights in a row where they were up, there were the yeshiva boys come. And they, they were, they were having a great time dancing. It was really quite joyful. But you know what? At twelve o'clock, you do want to go to bed. And so, and what happened that they, you could not go to bed. You, so we called, we had, we had called the police. The police came down. And they were quieter until the police left, then the noise went back on. In addition, the next day, they turned the, the, the same noise back on. So they know that it's illegal, but the question is, what is being done? Obviously, the owner of Sushi Boats allows events in the tent. You know, when they, with mic, with amplifiers and everything. Um. And, um. I would like to read a letter from one of the people who live, uh, behind me. Uh. And this is the letter. The person's name is, uh, Dr. Cecilia Escara. E S C A R R A. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Cecilia Escara, and I work for a local nonprofit clinic. Unfortunately, the late night noise from the sushi part, sushi boat parties in the area. Have made it difficult for me and many others to get the rest we need. This affects my work because I am tired. My wife says the same thing, truthfully. She's like, she's up, you know, so late with these noisy things. Anyway, so she, uh. Ceci, Dr. Cecilia goes on, I believe it's important to respect the needs of all residents, especially those of us who contribute to the well-being of the children in our community. Thank you. So bottom line is, you guys are doing a great job in many ways. The food's good. So many people are interested, but there's got to be some consideration of your neighbors and you also got to follow the laws. I, I can't do whatever I like. And same thing with, by you, you, you've got to. Can't have the, uh, amplifiers. You can't be up all, all night with this. Any thoughts, Joel? What do you think? I see you're smiling. You're obviously happy tonight. Good.
Hey, your three minutes are up, but we are. Thank you for bringing that information and, uh, I will expect. At our next meeting, when we deal with the voters.
Gary, do you want to send that letter in? You can email me.
And what is your, who is the, who is this? Was this Helen?
Nope, Jen, that's work.
Oh, Jen, okay.
Do you have a plan for? You can't do it. You can't have the darkness. You can't have the light. We'll discuss it next meeting. Be prepared. Expect promises to be kept. You can do it then. What I'm going to do as far as the public areas, I'm going to close the audible part of it. And then the, uh, we will maintain the public being for the purposes of the comments of people having writing. And we'll close the public hearing at the next meeting. Mother Earth's farm, sir. Okay, we've all heard, uh, discussing before. We don't have to repeat it. Is there anybody who should speak? Anybody on the list?
Nobody online.
Okay. In that case. Okay, and for the final part of the. If one more, we, we have three minutes. You can say a lot. I'll cover it in three minutes. But our habit is, is we do not have, we generally do not have the applicant speak. We don't get into a cross discussion. What happens is you have questions and comments. We want to hear them. We want them answered. It'll be answered right in that way. He gets a response also and we get something logical. So at the next meeting, the, by the next meeting, the applicant will have, whatever your question is, it will be answered. Writing for everybody. We have three minutes to speak. Uh, I saw there's only five different people on the list, although there's a lot there. You all have a right to speak. What I'm going to do, we have only five speakers. Uh, if you wish, after the three minute period, you have something more to say, we'll allow one more time.
We have some online too.
We have some online. Okay, how many do we have?
One right now.
Okay, it's a reasonable number. So if you do have something, somebody else discusses something and you want to add to it. If you put your name on the list, you can cycle back again. Uh, you, you see the three minutes? I would appreciate, we, we record our minutes. And if there's cross talk or somebody talking in the background. Whatever you're saying gets lost. It's just not recorded. It's not recorded. It doesn't exist. So please be quiet while someone else is speaking. So we can hear them and so we can record everything that's there. Um, you heard the rest of it? Uh, do we have, who do we have? Luke first of all.
Brandon Hummel. News guy.
You can, you can come back for a second try later.
Thank you.
Lesha.
Can we repeat your name, please?
My name is Lesha Snahara, and I live on the Tierra Road in Hurleville. Proposed cluster development, um, is basically a cluster street for my residence. Um, the first item that I would like to address tonight is how the proposed cluster development will negatively change the rural character of our neighborhood. I would like to start by giving you an overview of Matira Road. Matira Road is a heavily wooded, hilly, and tree-lined rural road with spans one mile. Matira Road does not even have painted traffic, traffic lane on the road. There are sixteen homes only on Matira Road, eight on one side of the road, eight on the other side of the road. And the homes are spread out over a large area, creating a feeling of isolation and wide open spaces. This is what the residents of Matira Road enjoy. This is why the residents of Matira Road bought property on Matira Road and settled there. Many of the residents on Matira Road, like the Hummel family, have been there for three generations, if not more. Also, the Price family, I remember Erica's grandmother, who lived actually on Meyer House. So the people have been there over a long time. My, my husband's family has been there since sixteen, and I have been there for at least thirty-two years. I would continue by saying, in the immediate vicinity of the proposed development, individuals own parcels of substantial size. There is a two-hundred-ninety-acre farm owned by the Center for Discovery, as well as other parcels consisting of thirteen acres, eighteen-point-two-five acres, six-point-oh-eight acres, five-point-five acres, five-point-two-four acres, et cetera. As you can comprehend, there is low density of homes on Matira. Cluster development in no way signifies low density development. These are approximately two-acre lots being constructed in all foods, in an agricultural zone that falls for one half a tenth. This will definitely change the character of our neighborhood. The proposed cluster development is going. So like I said, there's no cluster development on Matira Road, or in the immediate vicinity of the proposed project. Neighboring roads, which are Meyer House Road and Crumb Road, do not have any cluster developments at all. Therefore, our cluster development would negatively affect the character of our neighborhood. Good one? Because it would not blend seamlessly with the existing neighborhood character. Okay, I'll come back.
Put your name on the list.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm Evelyn Raymond.
My name is Evelyn Raymond. I've lived in Hurleville since nineteen eighty-four.
How long have you been recording?
Oh, okay. My name is Evelyn Raymond, and we've, I've lived since nineteen eighty-four in Hurleville, and enjoying everything that Lesha has spoken about. Um, I am definitely against the cluster type of development for the same reasons. And I would say changing zoning is a very bad idea um, to include anything other than one home. Ten acres sounds good. I don't know all the details about that. But it's, I am, I always ask the question, like, who benefits from this kind of development? And it's not gonna be the residents that are there now. I live on Crumb Road, so I, that hill that goes down toward Crumb Road, it is very small. Road, the impact of the water, the impact of traffic, all of that is gonna definitely change all of the um, the character of the neighborhood. So I can't in good faith say, oh, sure, we're new neighbors, no. It's just not gonna, not gonna. Thank you.
Next, Ellen.
Bonnie. Can I translate into Lesha? Well, if she, I may be redundant if she says everything she has to say, and I might not even.
Or you can get up and say, I agree with her. Add you.
Okay, here I come. My name is Bonnie McCoskey. I live on Smith Road in Hurleville. I live in sixty-two acres. And uh, it's nicely peaceful and quiet there. Um, I agree with what had been said prior that uh, I don't think it's a great idea to dismantle, in my view, uh, agricultural zoning. I think you'll be opening up, opening up the floodgates to the next speculator developer who says, oh, my God, I bought a hundred-and-fifty-seven-acre piece, and now I don't know what to do with it. Aha, I'll get the zoning changed. I don't think that is a good idea. I also worry that there will be a water problem. And it troubles me that I've been hearing lately, most recently Tuesday, the town board, town board meeting, that now we're having people stepping up and saying, there's plenty of water. There's a reservoir. There's a river. And there is a local, then a Zima developer, a little bit, local um, planning boards, town boards, who is saying that complaints this time in Bethel, that people have that they're having water issues are true. So I think that if you dropped six wells across the street from Lesha's house, uh, how do we know that there will not be interference with her wells? I have a personal experience with that in Monticello, when a developer built a, uh, it was actually Harris Woods, across from an area that I lived in. There was a horse park next door. We both did it out of water. Well, it was in their subdivision approvals, and they hadn't made good on me if they interfered with the residential water supply. They had to cap the well. Well, that didn't happen. We ended up in a lawsuit, which went on for years. Eventually, before it went to trial, they decided, okay, we'll regill their well. They set up over our well, they made it deeper, and then they went over next door and made those wells deeper. We continued to have water problems, and we eventually sold our property, essentially without a well. That, that was guaranteed. So my worry here is, is there going to be a bond? Is there gonna be money in escrow? Is, what if these six well interfere with the local neighbor's wells? Who's gonna be responsible for that? Are they gonna have to do a, a new, a well? Are they gonna have to uh, go to the Army Corps of Engineers to see if uh, one well interfering with the other well? Okay, that's one point. My next point is, you're building four-bedroom houses. Do you know what the occupancy is gonna be? According to Department Health, average occupancy, typical occupancy should be one to two people per bedroom. If your sewer is gonna be calculated on bedrooms, your water is gonna be calculated on bedrooms. If you don't know what the occupancy is, and typically, the residences around here have very high occupancy, and the single-family houses often have more than one family living in that, without saying. Um, so is there going to be a problem with sewer contamination and lack of availability of water? Because you're pulling more out of the aquifer than you can count on. It's not gonna be a hundred-and-ten gallons per day for many.
Okay, thank you. Who's that? And you may sign up again if you would.
I'm signing again. That's a really quickly. I did um, confirm on Dylan. There's been two comments about changing the zoning, and I just want to clarify that this is a permitted use in the zone. Nobody is not, there, there's no zone change. Cluster developments are a permitted use in, in, yes? Okay, yes. I understand. No, that's okay. Sorry.
Okay.
She says it's a permitted.
Okay, go ahead and say your name. My name is Charles Payne. I actually live at three-twenty, and I also have an address for three-twenty-four Meyer House. I'm also the uh, fire chief from Hurleville. Uh, one of the things that I have that is kind of concerning to me about this issue is, uh, because of some of the stuff that has been happening for over the summer. So my concern is, is more water. Uh, we don't, I don't think we're gonna have enough water for all these places um, because of a couple of issues that I've noticed. Uh, one is, the issue is on um, the house on the corner here. This guy has just re-done his house over for a five-bedroom home. There's about twenty to twenty-five people staying in that home uh, with a camper that has been added to the back of the property, that is now attached to the uh, sewer that was put there by certain people that I know that's been. Um, the other thing is, that I noticed this summer that has really made a suggestion of impact on me, because I noticed the water table has gone down a lot for me during the summer. I know that I had a couple of issues where brown water came about, so forth, because the Clinton house, if any of you know what the Clinton house is, it's the little bungalow colony up the road from me on the right-hand side. They had about fifty to a hundred girls staying there. Um, I know that for a fact because I watched them walk down the road every Saturday, uh, going to the shul on Husky Road, because they can't get across, because Garden House Road is closed down. Um, and, and I notice it's a big problem because they build a pool up on the Clinton house. So I don't know where the issue is that's been looked at that at all. But each one of these, has there been a well test and see how much water it's gonna drain? How much water is it gonna pump? Um, you know, for, you know, even though Mike says it's four bedrooms, four-bedroom home, I don't know. And as of right now, if you look at this, the house on the corner, it's had twenty to twenty-five people staying there almost all summer. I'm gonna say, all summer. So that's another thing. The last thing I have is uh, the road. That could be a two-lane road, so I have enough clearance to get a fire truck up in there if I have to turn around, um, a tanker or something, just in case.
That's where you gotta, yeah, so where you have to say what you want.
Correct.
As a fire chief.
So that's the only thing I have more than anything that I can say.
Can I ask, do you have any idea how productive your well is? How many gallons from that?
No, I don't, be honest with you. And it's because it's an old-fashioned, uh, I'm gonna say, you know, from uh, my point of view, it's an old farm from the forties, from many Greenspan. I don't know what their process was. That's how long it was ago.
Thank you. You can sign up again if you wish.
Thank you, sir.
Next.
Um, can we do the one online before we go back?
Yeah, go ahead.
Jay, can you unmute? Okay, go. Please, yeah, Sam.
There you go.
There you go.
Thank you. Good evening, board. My name is Jay Solomon. I'm a homeowner, homeowner at ninety-seven Crumb Road, um, quite close to the um, area um, of the development here on uh, Matira Road. I just have several points to make, uh, you know, reiterating some of the subjects that are brought up by the other speakers. First and uh, um, first importantly, that clustering adversely affects a community's rural character. Um, as Ms. Snahara testified before the board, uh, this is in fact a, a very rural road with, with houses spaced out along it. Uh, I also note that the Center for Discovery, which rebuilt, rebuilt, rebuiltated the Matira Farm, spent a lot of time and money and effort um, to maintain the character of the farm and the road, uh, including the um, uh, erection of, of stone walls and the preservation of the original buildings that were on the site. Um, um, also important is uh, the fact that there is no municipal water and sewer on Matira Road. Um, uh, clustering raises serious concerns about wastewater disposal, uh, particularly for the residents in the immediate vicinity, uh, such as Ms. Snahara's um, home. Uh, certainly with larger lots, which, which this property can certainly uh, hold. There's plenty of room on this property to conform with the agricultural zoning of one house per ten acres. Uh, uh, larger lots, it's much easier to retain the original character of the land. Uh, and that should be a, a major concern under uh, uh, roads, um, such as Matira Road. Um, and of course, there will be far less concern about uh, wastewater management or um, uh, uh, the aquifer, the uh, the pulling of groundwater, uh, as opposed to having wells on top of each other. Uh, and lastly, um, I would reiterate that this would set a dangerous precedent uh, for permitting uh, uh, or encouraging developers to seek similar relief um, and uh, and putting the board in a much harder position uh, to deny uh, future developers if they've already permitted this to occur. Uh, so in the interests of protecting the rural um, uh, uh, nature of Matira Road, uh, protecting um, the aquifer and avoiding concerns of wastewater management, uh, I strongly believe that the board should decline the cluster housing, uh, change of plans. The original plans um, of six houses, uh, spread out over the property is much more advantageous to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have somebody else on the list?
Yeah, um, Vic.
Vic McCarthy. I'm living on Main Street Road. Just heard Helen say that uh, two acre, two acre zoning is a permit of, and it's cluster development. I don't understand why, if everybody else has, has three acres. That's not my main concern. My main concern is, the applicant came here, he was required to go back to the zoning board to get the zoning changed. When he came back and part of the zoning board, said that he owns the property. Lesha checked with the county the day of that meeting. He did not own the property. Had a, had the papers, noting, saying that he owned the property, that he submitted. His attorney also knew that he did not own the property. And he didn't come clean until she showed that he didn't own the property. My problem is, is that there's no conflict once again. You can come here and lie, and then you can turn around and continue with your application.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Do we want to go back to Lesha or to Abe Grossman? You want to.
Let him speak again.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. My name is Abe Grossman. I'm actually a developer of, you know, of a county, and I've done a couple of developments here and there. Well, my concern is that I understand the hard feelings of all the neighbors that over so many years, they lived ten, fifteen acres apart from each other. And I understand they're not happy about development happening in their backyard. Like everyone says, man, I'm my backyard. I hear issues about water problems. They don't feel as adequate water. They have sewer. They don't feel as adequate sewer. They have a problem with the traffic. So I've been at these meetings over, met over the years. I've been to all these meetings, and I've heard all these neighbors with all these developments opposing the development. Now, if this developer came and he's asking for an actual zoning change, which I understood in the beginning of the meeting, then I, then I understand. The neighbors have a right. But this gentleman is coming over here, and it's, it's an approved usage. He's coming into a, a piece of property that allows, yes, an agricultural, but it does allow what he's asking for. Now, if you have issues for water, for sewer, for traffic, for anything else other than that, these, these, these developers. These, these, these developers hire top-notch, they spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to get. Top-notch engineers that live study. They do water studies. And sometimes mistakes happen. I heard a company hit that his neighbor draw out that water dam. That happens with town of Fallsburg. They went and built for ma- next to Formaggio, commercial well. They did all their studies, but for some odd reason, it's draining out the neighbor from Maggio's water supply. They had, they spent hundreds of thousands of dollars for that, for that water system. But that water system had to be shut down. Because it was affecting the neighbors. So we see here that even with engineers and even with all the money spent, mistakes do happen. And ultimately, there has to be consequences. Now, I'm not saying that maybe that the board should make a decision that. Confirm, because I heard some back backlash here that the town is not coming through, people are living. Uh, neighbors with fifty people living in a house, that's not this gentleman's fault, but down the street, somebody is building, is living in a house illegally or making extension, that's not this man's fault. He has a right as a, as a landowner to build what's allowed and put into the town votes. So I sympathize with everybody over here. However, you know, maybe if if the town feels this question of water or sewer, they should put up a bond. And they should leave extra money just in case there is an issue. But that's where I'm just, I came in, I just didn't even plan to come to this meeting, I came to something else. And I just had to put my input over here explaining to the crowd that this is a rightful usage that he has on this property. Thank you.
Thank you, but don't even get tired. So, you know, I don't think that we're looking.
We, excuse me, we have some quiet after.
Hi, my name is Lesha, and I have Matier Road. Anyway, I don't think that we're coming here looking for sympathy. Because New York State law requires that the planning board take the following two factors into consideration. When making a determination as to whether a group or denied a cluster development variance. One, will the undesirable, will there be an undesirable change? Or will an undesirable change be produced in the character of neighborhood? That is what we are addressing here. Number two, will a detriment to nearby properties be created by granting a variance? So now I gotta jump back to my original spiel to eat the train of thought, though. You know, it kind of broke up my whole speech of what I was gonna say. So I have to go back a little, a little bit. There's no cluster development from Matier Road, Meyerhoff Road, or from Rose. Therefore, a cluster development would negatively affect the character of the neighborhood. Because it would not blend seamlessly with the existing neighborhood or character. There would be a major visual and funk, there would be major visual and functional clashes with the surrounding properties that are already in place. The new cluster development would not fit in with what's already there. The proposed cluster would consist of seven homes in total. Four over here in a row and four over here in a row. We don't have that anywhere on the tier Meyerhoff or Front Row. That would change the character of the neighborhood. I'm not looking for anybody's sympathy. Also, there's one drive by going down the center right here. Significantly concentrate vehicular traffic in one area of the road. This would not benefit the neighborhood or the community. This would produce noise pollution, light pollution, and a safety issue leading to residents' dissatisfaction. As for water and sewer, there's gonna be seven septic and seven wells. But every septic and well is only gonna be on a two-acre lot. The wells are gonna be very close to each other, and being that they are, it could affect our water. We know of residents um on Brophy Road. Harry Gibbs, who went for four wells, we have to pay for each one. A lot of our senior citizens and residents can't afford that. If we run out of water, our homes are gonna be worthless. There's gonna be a safety issue and a major one. We will not have clean, fresh drinking water, cooking water, bathing water, either water to flush the waste. Also, I'd like to point out that, I'm gonna use residents' time. Also, I'd like to point out.
We have somebody else.
Okay, let me just finish my sentence. I just. Also, I'd like to point out that most of the homes of residents on Matier Road are primary homes. If we run out of water, we can't pack those two cases and run to our other home in New York City. We got nowhere to go. We're stuck there without water, sewer, toilet, whatever. Like when the lights go out, we all know how uncomfortable it is trying to to um use the toilet and and get water from somewhere. We all know that uncomfortable feeling when the lights go out and we have no water, because we have no.
By the way, I wasn't enjoying your reading your question.
Um, and Arthur, again, just before the next comment, for clarification purposes, this is not a variance, this is a permitted use. There's no zoning, there's no variance required here, it is permitted as of right.
Yeah, I think the confusion might be this was before the ZBA to go to twelve lots, which was not allowed. So they were looking for five additional lots, the ZBA rejected that, so what's before. Uh, today, it's just the seven lots that are allowed by the cluster subdivision law. And a zone change would be before the town board, it wouldn't be before this board, it's no sense, not a zone change yet.
Right. Abe Grossman?
So whenever I sat down these last three, four minutes, I wanted to discuss with the developer. Was actually blown away. We're talking about one hundred and twenty acres. And what he's asking for is seven houses. Now, agriculture is ten acres, your own house. So that would give him a hundred and twenty acres, twelve houses, but there's different setbacks and stuff like that. So possibly he would get less. And usually towns love when they cluster and they leave a hundred and twenty acres. And they do a little thing of six little townhouses on one hundred and twenty acres. Wow. And that's, that's affecting the neighbors? Seven houses on one, seven townhouses or whatever it is on one hundred and twenty acres? Blown away. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Now, okay, in that case, this will appear on our agenda next month for our discussion.
Oh, could I go half my time?
Sure, please.
Yeah.
I'll find more time.
I signed up for more time, and he's donating.
Well, you're in really limited too. Is there anybody else? All right, you, you can be the one exception.
Okay.
If I'm being a half the time.
Put her on fast forward.
Okay, so it's my understanding that the town of Fallsburg needs to make this decision. The town of Fallsburg Planning Board needs to make this decision about this cluster development um by reviewing. I'm just, um, by, by reviewing New York State law. Because what I found was that you do not have to approve the cluster development. Okay, if you feel it's an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, you don't have to approve it. That's what I found. Um, if you look deep and deep down, you'll probably find it too. Um, and also it said, um, will a detriment to nearby properties be created by granting a variance? So that's what I found, um, and I believe I was accurate in my investigation. And I feel that it will change the character of the neighborhood, and that's why I'm here today. I welcome one house, seven acres, seven houses or six, that's fine with me, doesn't bother me in the least bit. That's what I would really like to see. One house on ten acres. People buy property, they're, they should build on their property. But um changing the character of the neighborhood and making it a cluster development, it doesn't go. In the area we are in, and you are opening up the door. Because this one will open up the door to many others to come into the neighborhood. And you're gonna just ruin the entire community, um, and you're not gonna preserve that rural character. So, um, that's what I would like to share with you. And I do not. Not welcome our name, it's just one house, ten acres, six or seven houses. That's fine, I mean, that would be great.
Thank you very much.
I have, I have a question. Is that correct what she said about that?
Um, I can read the section of New York State law that deals with cluster development, if you'd like me to read it.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so it's section two seventy-eights. Of, um, chapter sixty-two is the town law, article sixteen of Don't Plan. So the section two seventy-eight subdivision review approval of cluster development. Uh, definition, if you want, it enjoys those definitions and then authorization purpose. The town board, made by local law ordinance, authorize the planning board to approve a cluster development simultaneously with the approval of plat- or plats pursuant to this order. So that basically authorized the state when you're up. State law authorizes the town to allow the planning board to adopt, to enable um cluster. That's what the town has in its subdivision law, is the cluster subdivision. Um, approval of a cluster development shall be subject to the conditions set forth in this section and in such local law, local law or ordinance. Such local law ordinance shall also specify the zoning districts outside the limits of any incorporated village in which cluster development may be applicable. In the town of Fallsburg, any residential zoning district, including the agricultural district, allow for clustering. That's what the subdivision law basically says. You can cluster in any um zoning district that allows residential development. The purpose of a cluster development shall be to enable and encourage flexibly flexibility of design. And development of land in such a manner as to preserve the natural and scenic qualities of open land. Three conditions. A, this procedure may be followed at the discretion of the planning board in said, if in that planning board's judgment, its application would benefit the town. Provided, however, that in granting such authorization to the planning board, the town board may also also authorize the planning board to require the owner. To submit an application for cluster development, subject to criteria contained in the local law ordinance uh authorizing cluster development. So again, that the state gives the local government the authority to set whatever conditions they, you know, deem necessary in their local zoning code. B, a cluster development shall result in a permitted number of building lots or dwelling units. Which shall in no case exceed the number which could be permitted in the planning board's judgment. If the land were subdivided into lots conforming to the minimum lot size and density requirements. Of the zoning ordinance or local law applicable to the district or districts in which such land is situated and conforming to all other applicable requirements. Basically, that says you can't have any more lots than you normally would be able to under a conventional subdivision. Okay, and then we have C. The planning board, as a condition of plat approval, that's the subdivision approval, may establish such conditions on the ownership, use, and maintenance of such open lands. Showed on the plat as it deems necessary to assure the preservation of the natural and scenic qualities of such open lands. The town board may require that such conditions shall be approved by the town board before the plat may be approved uh for fi- for filing. So again, the conservation area will be subject to a conservation use, that which means that land will be built on. Um, D, the plat showing such cluster development may include areas within which structures may be located. The height and spacing of buildings, open spaces, and their landscaping. Off-street, open and enclosed parking space, streets, driveways, and any other features required by the planning board. Uh, in the case of a residential plat or plaques, the dwelling units permitted may be at the discretion of the planning board. Detached, semi-detached, attached, or multi-story structures. Um, in this case, only single-family homes are allowed in the act district, so the local law um requires that. The next section is noticing public hearing, um, filing of the plat. Um, and then effect, the provisions of this section shall not be deemed to authorize the change in the permissible use of such lands. As provided in the zoning ordinance or local law applicable to such land. So that's the state enabling legislation that authorizes the town to permit clustering of subdivisions as a, as a permitted.
It's time to make one comment for it. What we have to do is balance this, this whole process. What we get, what you get in return for having a cluster. Is going to get a hundred and twenty acres that never can be developed. The town board could change your area to one-acre zoning, put in a sewer line, put in a water line. They cannot change the fact that that land will never ever be built on. You get all that green area as a, as a return to having a cluster. That's the bargain that's made, and that's who we have to balance. It's basically protective of the area, and we see it that way. That land is just never used for anything building anymore. It's permanent, conservation isn't, can't be taken.
And there's a fact sheet in the back of the room, if anybody's interested, that just explains.
So that's the balance to avoid us, you'll get.
And it's not, you need to follow the verb, it's used all throughout the state and all throughout uh the country.
And I thank you very much for coming, and I thank you for your cooperation. We've got, uh, the board has one item, which is.
The public hearing closed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Public, public hearing, closed for order, audible. You sure?
I'm not gonna talk more than seven.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, my name is Joel Thon. Uh, I'm not affiliated with this project at all, I'm seeing it tonight for the first time. I understand it was a twelve-lot subdivision before, now it's a seven-lot subdivision. I'm sure there was a conventional subdivision prepared for this project, I haven't seen it tonight, I don't, was present, I'm sure it was presented before. Uh, but, you know, I'm looking at this as a conservation subdivision or a clustered subdivision. Like the chairman said, you keep a hundred and twenty acres uh for every while. It's not, and and not only that, you keep all the greenery, but a seven-lot clustered subdivision will keep, will keep the impervious surface down. Deforesting, and you'll have a lot less trees removed from the, instead of doing a, probably, I don't know how it went, a conventional subdivision. Instead of doing a on-growth in, all these impervious surfaces, all this uh deforesting. You're all condensing it to one section, which is probably a tenth of what, what would have been the third, or probably less than even a tenth of what would have been the third. If you were doing conventional subdivision of seven lots, which is permitted by, by the zone. So I see this as a big benefit to any neighborhood, yes, I mean, there are smaller lots than the rest of the neighborhood, but I see this as a big benefit of protecting uh future waters down. Thank you.
And you got done, it must have been three minutes. All right, so we've got to close the, or a little portion of the public hearing. You have until our next meeting to get it more in writing, so the public hearing in real form remains open for the next month. And again, I thank you all for coming, and I thank you for your part. What now?
Appropriate that show.
Yes, but, um. But we're trying to say that. We've got a board will remain here for the applicants initially to opportunity, you know, where it remains. Clearly enough, we're doing a bit of it.
Yeah. That will keep it down, so you can have the problem.
Okay, so we're now under way our agenda now.
Hey, guys, um, this is a thing for group, global park. Where we have the, the community building located at the bottom end, it's developed. Over the bottom here, uh, we have the two up here. Camp house here, the whole huge open area, you know, it's been a couple of acres, this is a playground. It's with swings, having slides, this whole open area. It was even suggested, you know, have a lot of kids and whatever, is that. We just do this, a couple of rooms in here. Over to this section, which had two houses here, which can keep it both of the, both to the swings, to the swimming pools. over to this section, which had two houses here, which can keep it both of the, both to the swings, to the swimming pools, the existing wellhouse. It's not affecting anything. The two houses that were here, we just move it on down to where we hit to what these two right here, units four and five, these are either gone. They're just replacing these two that were here, we put them over here. Um. The engineers come out, it says nothing absolutely has changed, the same parking, same size shoe, same drainage over there at that location. Um, not absolutely no change whatsoever, any kind of infrastructure, other other than we're putting the shoe where two houses were and moving two houses over and leaving this place completely open.
Where's the extra parking? Are you gonna have some shoe now?
Yes, I'm coming. Same way, originally it was designed right here, right.
How many, how many parking did you add?
I think it's about fifteen right in front of it.
Okay.
The whole length, the building is like a hundred and forty feet long.
All right. So you thought fifty parking spots?
Yeah, whatever, whatever was there before we moved to here.
Okay.
Not only that, not only that, there is the existing parking up up right here, which we did another ten fifteen, so it's a nice idea that we have a shoe here, so if there's any overflow, it could pop right here. Next to that was the old clubhouse, and I still have another lot, so that would give them actually like twenty-six parking spaces up. So that's that's always.
I don't know. Wouldn't it be cheaper to move the swing side over?
So the answer is that you also had in mind that if, you know, somebody wants to come from the outside to use this the semi-golf. Or from there, I use the 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 semi-golf, maybe he doesn't have to drive around the whole development to come to the back of the development. It's pretty much right there.
So now it's gonna be open to the public, you have.
It's not open to the public. I don't. But also, we do have all the, there's so many pools, we have two swimming pools and a daycare pool that right up over here. So perhaps if the daycare is down here, you have to walk over tomorrow, we got all the way up to the swimming pools. So even if we move the, like you said, swap out to the playground, but the pools are about a million dollars. Between the the two pools and the pool house and over that.
You can afford to move it over there.
We're looking for the management site plan, move one building.
Two buildings.
Two buildings.
We're moving two, two structure over to here, including the shoe over there, it's three buildings.
Okay, that's it, that's all we had, that's it.
Uh, that's on the main road.
Which may sound on the main, the main road is up here.
Yeah, but how far would the shore be off of the main road?
The main road here, oh, you're talking about. At least a hundred and fifty feet, two hundred feet. From from up here all the way to here. You mean from Cairo fifty-six N?
Yes.
We have pulled up.
Actually, I have the measurement, it's two hundred and forty.
You say almost three hundred.
But you're not on there.
Sure, don't try.
It's actually two hundred and, two hundred and forty-eight feet, so it's quite far.
If I may ask a legal counsel or perhaps a planner question, is there any complication because the town line goes very near there?
That's just what we brought up.
Gushing here just happened.
It has to be approved by Mamakating.
Well, he said be referred um to the two thirty building. So that's within five hundred feet of a municipal boundary?
Got to tell them, but it was probably coordinated review, it's part of the time repair, so.
I don't know if you feel like, you know, the approval is pending their, you know, review. But they do have, you know, the time.
I think we've been on a, a pretty bad paper.
Yeah, I mean, especially.
The municipal boundary thing, it wouldn't have been so easy if you'd seen a little further.
So the answer really is, we're not, the square foot, we we take, we're just.
We're not, we're not unwilling. In fact, the problem is, there's a technical one, if there's a town line there.
Yeah, it's a procedural.
Right, so the town line is, it's not in the.
But it's a distance from town.
Probably five hundred feet of it, so we have to notify.
We have to notify.
And we can also, my question is, if we notify it and we say it's, we don't have any objections, can come, can.
Yeah, it's fair, but.
It's great, okay, well, it didn't, you know, have, can you approve it subject to that, that, but instead of coming back again.
I think it'd be better just to get the approval for the next meeting and then if too many comes back and there's no issue. Just do the approval then. Yeah, well, we would send them a notice, then they would have, you know, thirty days to respond. If they don't respond.
Just like a challenge, yeah, no response.
Yeah, I'm about to make. Yeah, they'll, they'll receive a letter. Yep.
Maybe know where I'm coming from.
Yeah.
Because we want to see you next month. All right.
You don't have time this summer. Yes, that's your.
That's what happens when you're late. Okay, thank you very much, everybody. And can, can send to be on the agenda now.
No, you have email.
Tomorrow.
But you have to send the request to Mamakating.
Who has nine twenty-five, running for.
It's, it's the same section.
Yeah, the cables are. I'm not gonna rat anybody.
Yes, separate section of the town law, not coming tomorrow. I'll even give you a.
I want.